Everybody present in the chamber and those listening online to the Lincoln County Council Pension Committee. My name is councillor Condell and I'm the chairman of this committee. Can I remind those in attendance that the audio visual feed of this meeting is being broadcast live via the council website? And I'll try and ensure all members have the opportunity to ask questions and make contributions. We'll now move on to the formal agenda. Apologies for absences.
Thank you, chairman. We have apologies for absence from councillor Bunny and Tom Hotchin.
Thank you. Declaration of members' interests.
I'm a deferred and active member of the pension fund.
I'm an active member.
I'm retired now, so finished altogether, so thrown from the pension. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking at the minutes of the previous meetings. Does anyone have any comments on accuracy? If not, can I have a proposer? Councillor Kay? And second, councillor Roberts? All four accepting it? Thank you. Any against? Any absentations? Thank you. We'll now move on to item four, a report by independent chair, sorry, the independent chair of the Lincolnshire Local Pension Board. George Graham.
Thank you, Chair. I'll take the report as read. It sets out the business the board looked at at its last meeting. I draw attention to a small number of issues. Performance in the administration service continues to be at a consistent level, although there remain, as is the case across the local government pension scheme, a number of backlogs, which the administrators seeking to deal with. The board was pleased to see progress in relation to a number of issues which it's been raising for some considerable time, in particular the use of subsidiary bank accounts and the issue of the branding of the administration service. And I think there is more progress reported on that in papers that are to be considered at this meeting and at the board's meeting this afternoon. And the board was pleased to see a positive direction of travel in relation to compliance with the Regulator's General Code. Happy to take any questions, Chair.
If any question. Councillor Hill?
Yeah, I mean, obviously on that point, I mean, it's not exactly totally reassuring what's been said, sort of progress in, you know, is being made. So I just wonder when we'll get to the stage where the assurance is complete.
Thank you, Chair. I think it will be difficult ever to give 100% assurance. I'm beginning to sound like an auditor, which is extremely worrying. The assurance that we get from the work that is reported to the board and is reported to this committee would indicate that in all material respects, the fund complies. There will always be areas, and some of them are reported to you in the Fund Update Report today, where there is some degree of non-compliance. Now, that may be due to employers failing to pay contributions over on time. That happens. It doesn't happen to any great extent, but it is a form of non-compliance. The assurance we gain is that the fund has controls that ensure that we know about those things and action is taken. So I think, yeah, we will always see areas of non-compliance. The issue is, is something done about it when it happens? And in this fund, the answer is yes. And that's... I've looked at a number of compliance statements with the General Code across a range of LGPS funds. And the Lincolnshire Fund compares extremely favourably to those other funds. I think, you know, you're not behind, but I think it would be difficult ever to, for me to sit here hand on heart and say, I can give you 100% assurance that everything, you know, you'll comply with everything. And indeed, some of the guidance that's contained in the General Code, and certainly some of the things that are in there, I think are not within the gift of the fund to comply with. So there is stuff in there around the representativeness of the governing body, so of this committee. This committee is representative in terms of its political composition. By law, it has to be, but it isn't demographically representative. But that's a function of the electoral system, not of anything the fund can do. So, you know, we're not going to see any change in that because there's nothing you can do about it.
Could I come back? Yeah. I mean, it's just, you know, when it says paragraph 1.13, the report indicates gradually improving compliance. I mean, it's not really a reassuring statement. I suppose it is, and I suppose, what do you mean by gradually? Are we talking 10 years or something? And I suppose I would like clarification on the McLeod statement in the conclusions. Confirmation, can you just explain again to us to what the issue is and whether, in fact, I'm not a great fan of the whole McLeod situation, to be honest, but what is the situation? And there may be some issues where frankly, as a committee, we would be content to just accept we're not going to comply as some would wish us to.
Yeah, I think, Chair, it's not 10 years. You're making progress in a considered way that doesn't undermine delivering the overall objectives of the fund. You know, the fund is here to pay pensions when they fall due. Some of this other stuff is perhaps in the nice-to-do category. In terms of McLeod, the concern was that an entirely sensible decision had been made that you wouldn't include McLeod information in this year's annual benefits statements and you defer the effective date till August 2026. The concern was that the regulator would be looking for that decision to be made by the governing body, not as it had been made due to understandable time constraints using officer delegated powers. So there was, and Jo will correct me, but I think there was an amendment made to the minutes to reflect that the governing body had endorsed the decision in some way.
Yeah, there was a discussion at the board and councillor Condell was there and approved that addition to the minutes. Because of the timing of the elections and when the decision had to be made, we couldn't bring it to a pensions committee. So that I'm not concerned about. The main thing on the area of non-compliance was we don't have a fund-specific cyber policy. So we've been working on that. So our administrators do, who actually hold all the data for us, where the risk sits. However, it is our responsibility and we obviously work within LCC's cyber policy. But there was a new thing that came out with TPR, that it was best practice then to have a fund-specific cyber policy. So we've been working on that and we will be bringing that to the board in January and then to the committee to approve in March. So that was what was underway. So we're not looking, where we can comply, we are looking to do that as soon as we are able. It's absolutely not a 10-year timeframe, but as George said, there will be some areas where we don't have that control over. So as I say, membership of the committee, there is no input from the pension fund into that. So because the TPR code, there used to be a specific code that was just for public sector pensions, which was much easier to meet. The code now is a general one for all pension funds, so there are areas in there that are far more relevant to your corporate schemes than to a local government scheme. So we will never probably be 100% compliant against the TPR's code. But what we do is we explain why we aren't and if we can do something, what we will be doing. So hopefully that provides some assurance.
If there are no further questions, are we okay to accept this? Okay. Move on to Pension Fund Update Report. From Chair.
Okay, so thank you, Chairman. So this is the standard quarterly update paper. Recommendations here are that the committee consider, discuss the report and agree whether there's any actions or additional information that you'd like, and also consider the options for enabling additional time with investment managers and advise us of your preferred approach. So there's just a few points that I would like to highlight. So paragraph 1.4 on page 16 shows the performance of the fund. This was covered in detail at the investments meeting of this committee in September. Paragraph 1.9 updates the committee on the roll forward funding level. But this is based on the 2022 valuation. So as we're now nearly fully progressed with the 2025 valuation, this is not particularly relevant. We show it for information, but Agenda item nine will provide the latest funding position with the up-to-date assumptions and data, et cetera. Section two updates the committee on any breaches that have occurred over the quarter and then over the year in appendix D. There aren't any material breaches and there isn't anything that we have had to refer to the pensions regulator. Section four updates the committee on activity with Border to Coast and the Partner Funds and also a latest update on the Fit for the Future consultation. So I'm pleased to report that all of the seven new partner funds that have come from Access have completed their governance requirements and will be joining Border to Coast. So work has begun in earnest with them in bringing them into the Border to Coast partnership. The last joint committee was held on the 24th of September and paragraph 4.8 sets out the key points. Next meeting is on the 25th of November. And if anyone has any questions, I'll share the agenda once it's available. If anyone has any questions that they'd like raising with Border to Coast, please contact councillor Condell. And I'll just ask councillor Condell, is there anything you'd like to add following the JC?
Sorry, only from there, two things. I put out the reply that we got from Border to Coast on the consultation. It was better than nothing. Yes, so I'll say no more on that. And we're covering the meeting later, or the meeting later, or the the meeting we went to in last month, the two-day...
Oh, yeah, I'll do that in a moment. Thank you.
In that case, no, I have nothing else to add on this side of things.
Okay, so at the September meeting here, the committee asked that we give some consideration as to how there could be more time available to spend with our investment managers. So in paragraph 5.2 on page 20, I've set out three options that the committee might like to consider. I'll just finish the paper first, though, before if we can then go back to that. And then at section six, there's an opportunity for members to discuss training and any events undertaken and a reminder that in the weekly email, we will share any potential events you might be interested in attending. So this is where I'll just open up and say, would anyone like to cover anything? And councillor Condell, I don't know if you'd like to mention the Border to Coast Annual Conference?
Yes. Apart from myself...
Sorry.
I'll get there eventually with this. Apart from myself and Paul Keys and Joe and Claire, there was no one else at the Border to Coast meeting. I would recommend all of you who can attend next year's meeting, please do. It's a good opportunity to get to know the Border to Coast people, but not only that, get to know other people who are in the pool that we are working in. Understand them and how they are working with their pension scheme. Apart from that, it was a good fun time as well.
Yeah, I mean, just, I would have gone, but I was on holiday. I'll try. When I'm going to the LEED, I'm not sure, meeting the LEEDs, we're meeting the investment team at LEED. Isn't that booked in for that, haven't I? Just on training, I'm getting totally confused, to be honest. So could we have an update on what we are required to do? I thought I was up to date. I'm not sure I am. So what with, you know, the Lola, which I thought I'd done personally, but the other thing is now we're doing training when we're here anyway, I just need a, perhaps the committee could have some clarity on what we are mandated to do and what is sort of best practice, if you like. Because I'm getting totally confused now as to where I need to be on the training. So if Claire could help us out, not necessarily today, but send us an email saying, this is what you need to do.
Yeah, I've sent through an email with a link to Lola, but I'm very happy to have a quick chat after the meeting and we can just have a little look at that and make sure that you can log on and are looking at the things that we need you to do. The mandatory training is two elements. It's that induction training, which everybody did in June. I appreciate councillor Hill, you did that individually after that main day because you couldn't, weren't available on that day. And then there is that Lola training to complete as well. So the... I, well, we can have a look at that. We get reports directly from Hymons, which show all the modules that have been completed by the committee. As it stands at the moment, you're not showing us being complete.
I'm not very happy about that because I sat through all 12 modules and clicked the things. So can you go back to them and get their act together? Because I don't particularly want to sit through it all again.
No. If, we can maybe have a little look at the system together and just see if there's a button that needs clicking at the end of them. But we can happily go back to Hymons as well on that.
I deliberately did it. So perhaps I suggest you get back to Hymns and look at, because I did it very early, actually.
So just before we go to the discussion on the options at paragraph 5.2, since actually writing this paper, MHCLG have issued a new consultation, just to keep us busy, entitled Scheme Improvements, Access and Protections. This covers four areas, three of which are just quite operational. And we've been waiting for them for a while. So just briefly going through what they are. One is about the normal minimum pensions age. So this is just aligning the LGPS regulations with what is already in the Finance Act of 2022, raising the minimum age from 55 to 57, that you can take your pension from April, 6th of April, 2028. So that's just aligning us to where we need to be. But there are protections that it details in there for anyone that was in the LGPS immediately bought before the 4th of November, 2021, retaining that ability to take it from age 55. The second one is about academies in the LGPS. So this is just formalizing the approach for allowing multi-academy trusts who have academies across different funds to be able to bring them all to one fund. Generally, that will improve the administration, both for the fund and also for those multi-academy trusts. And it takes away the requirement for Secretary of State approval for that as long as the underlying funds are in agreement with that. The last one on the more operational side is what's called New Fair Deal. This is something that I think first came in about 2013. We've had consultations in 2016 and again in 2019. So hopefully this will be the last one and it will move forward. So this is taking out the admitted body status or broadly comparable scheme requirement when we have contractors coming into the scheme. What will happen is that we already kind of have resolved this through the use of pass-through that we do in that there's certainty of contribution rate and what happens to any liabilities and assets at the end. But instead of having to set them up as a new employer, the employer that those contractors, so the letting authority, will be called the deemed employer. So for LGPS, for pension purposes, for example, if LCC were outsourcing to Serco now, Serco would not be an admitted body in the scheme. LCC would be the deemed employer. So Serco would still pay it as agreed through the contract, but LCC would be the deemed employer. So it removes that risk when setting contract prices because you pay for it one way or the other. So the intention in doing this, and it's something that has been, as I say, it's been floated for a long time and I think it's generally positive. It should reduce the administrative burden. We have a lot of difficulties getting our admitted bodies to get our admission agreements signed in a timely way. And that puts our scheme members at risk if they're not signed up and contributing right from the time that contract starts. So it kind of helps with the issue that most funds have there now and avoids the risk of exit payments and credits, which, as I say, because we've adopted the pass-through default, we have minimized that anywhere. But it's expected that that will reduce the number of employers in the fund over a period of time because those employers that are already in the fund will be that deemed employer. So it's not just going to grow every time an academy has a new cleaning contract or a new catering contract, which is where we are at the moment. The final one, which there may be a bit more discussion on, is what was announced at the recent Labour Party Conference in Pension Access for Mayors and Councillors with proposals to reinstate the LGPS for councillors at all principal local authorities in England and also to offer access to mayors and deputy mayors. There are some kind of caveats around that, so councillors will have to opt in as opposed to automatically coming into the LGPS. And there will be some things like flexible retirement, redundancy, early retirement, they won't apply. So the main difference between prior to 2014, when councillors had access to the LGPS, is there, it was an employer decision, a council decision as to whether or not they offered LGPS to councillors. This, it will be open to all councillors, but you will have to decide you want to be in the scheme. So that's one that there might be a bit more discussion on. So the deadline for the response is the 22nd of December. So we will share details of the consultation in a weekly email and we'll bring a paper to the December meeting with a draft response. So that will give us some time to take on board any feedback and make any amendments. But if, having seen it, there are any views you would like including in that draft response, then please do get in touch with Claire and myself and we can ensure that that is captured. So I'll happily take any questions or you can go straight on to the discussion about the in paragraph 5.2 and the options proposed.
Steve?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to follow on on the conferences and training, I attended the LGC Investment and Pension Summit on the 11th and 12th of September in Birmingham. Lots of wide-ranging discussion, started off with economic position, which was quite a pessimistic start to the conference, so it did improve after that. Covered the upcoming pension bill that's going through the parliamentary process. Key thing there, obviously, the devil with all these things is going to be in the detail. Discussions around ESG and whether that's still terms that should still be used or whether it's more around sustainability. There's an excellent panel discussion on the definition of local. Jo said I had to say that because she was on the paddle. But what does local investment really mean? Because it can be interpreted in many different ways. Obviously, the improved funding position on the pools, which we'll discuss later today. And at that time, obviously, some of the pools were still going through the transition process of going from eight to six. And quite a lot of discussion about, is six still too many? You know, should that be even fewer than that? So lots of good discussions and it was really a good event to attend and I'd certainly recommend it.
I have one question, Jo, about adding in Nikkei and the UK equities into the data that you put in here. We've discussed beforehand, so I know you'll do that for the next meeting.
Yes, on appendix B to show the actual index that we're referencing when we just at the moment say Japanese equities, for example, or UK equities, we will add to that a reference to say exactly what index that is being reported on.
Are there any other questions? Okay, then, looking at the options for the investment committee. I sent an email out last night about the three options that we had. My preference was for option A, to move the Investments Scholarship Committee to the afternoon for two hours and have a two-hour workshop with the managers in the morning. From all the replies that I've had, that got the most votes, 10 of them. So unless there are any real objections, I'm going to go forward with that. Okay.
Thank you. So we'll make sure that happens from the December meeting.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, the Pension Administration Update. Matt? Mot's giving the... Oh, I couldn't see you there, Matt. And Matt is giving the update.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Apologies, I'm not there in person. It's just down to the weather. But the presentation this morning is on the period, 1st of April, 2025 to the 30th of June, 2025. And I think it's on page 44 of your pack. The first sort of areas I'd like to pick up is to do with the key performance indicators. And you've got a table there of some key performances that were met after their target date. The death grants, there were nine cases that didn't make it. I think the average was about 22 days. So it's about 10 to 12 days overdue. We have had, just across the shared service, quite high volumes. And that's not excused enough for not doing this. It's a very important area. But we are recruiting senior pensions officers to this team and that should have an effect on that process. The same applies to the death and defers, where we had six cases that were outside the period. We're also reviewing, just so the committee is aware of the actual process itself, make sure it is fit for purpose and we are reporting on absolutely the right information. To the best of my knowledge, there was no financial hardship to beneficiaries and dependents. Payments were just a little bit late, but not excessively, just, as I said, just a couple of days, a few days. Defer benefits into payment quotes, you'll probably see from your own report and accounts, we're now aligned to a national standard. So our measure has dropped from 35 days to 15 days. That happened overnight. The team wasn't resourced to do that. So resources being applied into that team. And for the interlinkings, exactly the same thing. The target moved from 35 days to 15. We think that's resourced well enough, but we are going to provide training, or we have provided training throughout the summer. I understand from listening to you this morning, McLeod has been mentioned. The interfunds outs are affected by McLeod requirements. Not least that the software is still not up to scratch and we are having to produce two manual calculations with the aid of spreadsheets to be able to update the record to make sure that they're accurate for the members. This takes longer to do. The same goes for interfund outquotes as well. Monthly postings, cyclical, not ideal, but certainly in this period with lots of returns from employers, some that have been stockpiled maybe for a year before year-end closes, we get them all in. They're being processed, they've been completed now. Transfers, we're looking at just adding in some training. It's probably slowed the period down while we've taken people off the frontline and processing to train their colleagues. So we expect that to perk up. And update member details, it's our lowest priority. There was a lot of work, just a few forms didn't make it, but we still hit 99.08%. Just to back up some of the things I said there and paragraph 2.0, staffing 2.1. We have a graduate that started this summer in finance. We have recruited five pensions officers. Two senior pension officer roles have been created. They were vacancies. We've employed two member services managers. This is a senior role. This is just underneath the management team at West Yorkshire Pension Fund. We've employed two member services managers, this is a senior role, this is just underneath the management team at West Yorkshire Pension Fund. And we're also advertising for another team manager. There's been a lot of work done to actually up resource so that we can make sure that the KPIs are met and backlogs are reduced. There are no vacancies currently anywhere else within the office. If I move through to the budget, 2.5. Our estimated cost per head of member was £22.30. That's actually coming in less at the moment, at £1.36 less, that is. So our projected costs there are £20.94 per head. There has been some savings with things like support stuff like station imprinting. We don't do as much as we used to and has been projected. Some of our staffing costs are down as well as their support costs, such as computer hardware, things like that. Shared Service Risk Register, which is 2.9. We've made some adjustments to the risk register, I believe that's an appendancy in your pack. We've changed the Risk 11, lack of timely software delivery. And it's been changed from very low and catastrophic to high and critical. As we can see there from the KPIs, the system isn't quite there in all areas. We just think currently it would be unlikely to be there across all areas. And even if we suffered something like a cyber attack, we think that the system is robust enough. We have 24 hour overnight backups and we could always work on the previous day system. And we are more than capable of producing work on manual calculations. So the risk is still high and critical, but no longer low catastrophic. Risk 16, impact on new legislation. It's the new Access and Fairness Consultation has added or will potentially add to our workloads and I'll come on to that later. And the closure of the deposit accounts have been added as a risk, Risk 17. Because it's not a case of we've identified these, we can now return the money to the fund. There has to be a clear, auditable trail. We need to liaise with HMRC. And if there are any tax implications, we need to address those as we move through it. Pension Dashboard, which starts at paragraph 2.11. I'll just given up date, not much has moved really. And I'm sure the committee are aware now, I've explained dashboards over the last months or so. Where we are at the moment is on schedule to go live on the 31st of October. So in a couple of weeks' time, there may be a slight delay. That's no fault of Lincolnshire Pension Fund or West Yorkshire Pension Fund. It's just we're sort of in a queue, is the best way to describe it, at the Pension Dashboard Programme. And it's just the time it's taking for the programme to actually get people live on the system. The only thing I would also add to that, that is live for us, for you. That's so that we can test the data that's on there and make sure that we are efficient proficient in responding to any queries. And the Dashboard Programme are employing many hundreds, thousands of testers to test all the data across the whole platform. Not just ours, but every pension scheme that joins. We still have not got a date when scheme members, the public, are able to join and view their data. DWP have promised us a six month notice period and that has not been provided. So we will let you know when that is provided and when the likely date for members are to join. Moving through the report to branding, points 2.40 and 2.41. There has been some discussions internally at West Yorkshire and with the shared service in general. Areas that have been discussed, quite important areas like cybersecurity servers and domains. I mean, that's, you know, top of our priority list as we change things, we have to protect member datas. And also perhaps easy to do things, maybe just having a common email address or a common logo or branding. And of course the banking arrangements, but we need to make sure that we're capable of doing that. It's timely and there's not a lot of cost attached to it. The other thing that we are aware of are the local government reorganisations. And before we brand for our four members, we just need to make sure that long term we are all to be members. Looking at point 2.42 and this consultation on change in the LGPS to improve fairness and access. I won't go through all the points there, but they will make some differences regarding, say, five year refunds and be able to pay members their money back if they've opted out. And there's an equalisation regarding benefits for partners and spouses that probably hasn't been very equal. And in 2.43, it mentions an administration burden, which is why we added this as a risk to the risk register. These will look retrospectively at the scheme regulations and benefits that were or could have been payable because it will change people's entitlement. And retrospectively, I'm talking about 20 years retrospectively. I believe that it goes back to 2005 when legislation was introduced for civil partnerships. The consultation closed on the 7th of August and West Yorkshire have responded on behalf of the shared service. And I believe there's a copy of that in your packs. Annual Benefit Statements at paragraph 2.45, really good result this year. 99.4% of the potential or available statements to be produced were slightly up on last year. There's always a slight reduction on 100%, but this is because there will be work in progress, transactions not yet completed. And when they are completed, then we will send that statement out. I believe, just looking through at this part, that's page 53, I think that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
councillor Hill?
Yeah, I mean, it's regarding the performance and particularly on the death ones where it's not good enough, is it? You know, this is, we talk about situations where the relatives or the people are obviously in a very emotional state, understandably. And for some reason, you're not able to deliver on the case. We're talking about a low number of cases, 36, I think, so priority one it's called. And you're only managing 60% of the target. So I just wonder what's going on and why it's not possible to get to 100% on a priority one. What are you playing at?
No, no, it's a good question. We're not happy with it either. There are some issues with maybe the process or rather we're checking whether there are issues with the process and whether it's the appropriate measure. We're looking what's pulled in to those broad comments like, you know, death grant payable. Because there might be no death grant payable, zero. In which case that wouldn't be any payment due. But the task itself, the process, would remain uncompleted, would be the last one, shall we say, to complete. And from a processes point of view, they might consider, well, it doesn't matter if it's outside the process, target days. I disagree with them, but you would perhaps understand that if there isn't a death grant payment actually due on that process, then we should concentrate on those that are due it. As I said, to the best of my knowledge, I understand that there was no financial hardship for those beneficiaries and dependents. And should payment be, as I said, about 12 days late, we would obviously apologise for that. So there's some internal workings and we are recruiting to that area. And I expect these KPIs to perform better over the next period and going forward into 2026.
So when will we get 100%? Can you give us a target?
Well, the aim is always 100%. So I don't know what the current period is, I understand it is improving. So let's come back next time and see if we are on 100% with the extra resource and a review of the process to remove those unnecessary ones to recall with nil payments. Or if they are nil payments, perhaps come back with further information to explain that there was no payment due.
Okay, could I just ask about the budget as well, please, Chairman? Obviously, you had an underspend, so again, one wonders why you weren't able to bring more resource in to deal with those priority one issues that we've just talked about. Has he gone?
No, I'm still here.
All right, you're still there. You disappeared off the screen, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, obviously, there is an underspend there, but obviously in terms of, there's two things that strike me. One is an overspend of 95,000 on support services and an overspend of £64,000 on use of legal services, et cetera, which obviously counterbalance by other things. And also the other one which isn't being used is the Investor Save, which you're not using at all. So can you just explain what's going on there? Because you seem to have increased the overspend on your support services and your performance hasn't improved consummately.
Okay, the legal, let's take that one there, an overspend on legal. For the first time, the fund has employed a head of legal services instead of relying on Bradford. There's various reasons for that, mostly Bradford's performance. And we already have our second appointment. It was an interim and then we appointed. We have also used that legal service far more than anticipated because we've needed legal advice regarding the temporary bank accounts and how we move away from those, move the money back into pension funds and how we would liaise with HMRC. So that is a justifiable overspend. As for the overspending support, I'd have to go away and clarify that. My immediate thoughts is that support in onboarding people and recruitment and those sort of costs would have gone up. Because although you're right, we still haven't resourced into some of the key areas or at least we haven't resourced quick enough. We have a continual recruitment programme. In some areas, we're sort of on the 20th in five years. And the reason for that is that pensions is really quite complex. Ideally, we want people with pensions experience because that would require us to have less training. If their experience is in local government, even better. But certainly when we recruit pensions officers, they might be quite young and inexperienced, they never worked in a pensions fund whatsoever. So there is quite an extensive amount of training that is required. So even when they're in post, they still might not be proficient enough. And the areas that you've highlighted as a concern, and you're right, they are a concern, i.e. deaths. This is a complex area where we need more senior inexperienced members of staff. So that will catch up, but it won't be the area that we would recruit to initially. I'll go back and check the overspends, just to be sure, particularly on support.
Why can't you just get some experienced consultants in to clear that backlog on deaths?
I don't think there are any consultants really that would be able to do that. And certainly if they were external consultants, we would have to seek legal advice again. You'd want data sharing agreements in place, that he'd access to all the data and our systems. So we do rely on our experienced staff and training, the next generation of experienced staff.
Sure, I find it difficult to believe there aren't retired people out there in the pension industry who have good knowledge of local government. But there we are, I'll let it lie there, but I do wonder if we ought to change the recommendations to make sure we have a concern. Particularly on the death one, I think some of the not hitting some of the targets is probably not too bad. But that one, I do think we should get that sorted out, or West Yorkshire should.
Sorry, councillor Woods?
Hi, Matt. With the KPI interfund out actual, is there any timeline on that and what impact it's having on the pensioner? So if they're expecting their pension in May, is it being pushed back weeks, months? What is the timeline on that and what are the implications of it?
Okay, so I didn't quite hear what KPI you mentioned. Did you say interfunds?
Yes, yeah, interfund out actual.
Right, okay. These are, as a rule, younger members of staff. These are transfers as they've moved from one local government employer to another. So almost exclusively, they are not due to retire anytime soon. So although the delay is worrying, yeah, the extra time it takes to do it, they may have concerns and they may be in contact with us. It will not affect a retirement because they're not about to retire. And long term, there is absolutely no effect to the value of their benefits because they will get the correct value on the date that it is completed. So therefore they have the correct values when they retire in 10, 20, 30 years from now.
Could I just add to that, please? Just to say, if there is ever an event with a member, so be it a retirement coming up and there is outstanding work, that is always done as a priority to ensure because there are then different KPIs for actually getting pension payments out on time. So if there was something outstanding, say, not so much with the interfund transfers because they're normally maintaining employment for a period of time after that. But if there's anything else, then any outstanding task get done at that point in time. So it's always made sure that everything is in place when somebody should be looking to retire.
councillor Otter?
Thank you, Chairman. Just following up on councillor Hill, if I'm reading the table correctly, it's actually an underspend on support services of 95. I think it's the narrative that's wrong, it's not an overspend. Just on the table as well, I think the headings are a little confusing because I think the third from last column is the forecast outturn position. And then the second to last column is the forecast variance outturn. It's not the June position, so I think those headings are a little confusing to what the numbers are showing. Because the fourth to last column is the June position. So what the table's not showing us is what's the June position compared to the estimated position at that time. So I think either the headings just want tidying up or the table wants setting out better to show the full year position and then maybe the quarter position as at June, because we've got some slight mix ups there. But my reading is that's a 95k underspend on support services, not overspend. Thank you.
I think that's a couple of good points there. I also thought I'd said underspend in my presentation, but I couldn't find it when I was responding. But I will still go and look at the three that were mentioned earlier. As for the titles and the positions, yeah, I take your point. If you don't mind, I'll take that back and I'll talk to the finance team who produced this. And if I understand, we have the June position, but you think it would be useful to have a quarter and full year position as well? Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. At the minute, it's got mixed columns which don't flow through the table.
Okay, I will take that back and then we'll bring the answers back to the fund before the next meeting or a revised table at the next meeting. Hopefully that's okay.
A further question there on the reasons for the underperformance. I'm hoping that the new staff you're hiring are going to plug these holes that we've got in the gaps for the target. Is there any reason to disabuse my hope there?
No, I hope that the additional resource, whether it will be additional people or training of people, I think is one of the areas, is training, will show dividends, you know, immediately through the summer and the autumn. And as I said, I would expect these results to improve for the next board or committee. It's January, isn't it? So I think I did say 2026, so I would hope that these are better by then.
Okay. Are there any additional questions? councillor Woods?
Yeah, just regarding the annual benefit statement. Obviously, 99.4% is a really good percentage. Just the remaining 0.6%, is that easily explainable? Is it easily explainable to see how to get that 0.6% or not?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's measured thereafter, we just measure on the 31st of August because that's the statutory requirement. But if we look at any of our work, so for examples, those interfunds. So if an interfund hasn't been completed by the 31st of August, we won't send a statement because the member is aware, the member fully aware, that that wouldn't include their full benefit values. So once that interfund is completed and we have their full membership and their full benefit values, we would then send them the annual benefit statement and plus maybe further information about the process of the interfund that's completed. And that is generally how the slack is taken up between the 99.4% at August and then what we do throughout the rest of the oncoming months. Some funds, we'll send those out, but we take the start here and the partnership, the shared partnership, that really if the member knows the values aren't correct, why would we send a benefit statement in August and then have to send a further statement in September, October, whenever that might be? It seems far less confusing and a better service for the member if we send them the if we send them the correct values when we finish the process. And I think the members fully understand and are happy with that.
Are there any further questions? If not, then I suggest we note that and move on to item seven. Chairman, I do think we ought to formally put some concerns in about the, particularly on the death situation. Clearly, we're not, well, anybody who's spoken is not happy with that, at least. I understand where you're coming from on that, yes. I think Joe wants to come in, chairman.
Just, it will be noted in the minutes that that has been raised and absolutely we will ensure that's fed back. We have been raising that concern at our shared service meetings and the KPIs also get discussed at the collaboration board that Michelle sits on as well. We have been doing some work with West Yorkshire about the policy that they have for deaths. And there's been some work done behind the scenes. There's a new head of service delivery that came in earlier this year that has been looking at all this stuff. And I have to say is actually really effective and has improved a lot of areas. So is working through these things. Some of the issue is where the processes aren't being registered in the system properly. So things are being done within the timeframe they should be. But the way the system is registering the processes is incorrect. So this is all being looked at. But hopefully, just to reassure you, that this is something that we discuss at our shared service meetings. All the priority ones, we want them to be exactly where they should be or better. So it is something that's very high on our list, but we can ensure that that gets noted in the minutes. And I will raise the concerns at our next shared service meeting that the committee are concerned about this.
It was just the phrase, the famous phrase, oh, that we're not hitting the target, so we're going to change the target. That did concern me a lot, actually, because that's the, you hear that a lot. Oh, we haven't hit the target, so the target must be wrong as opposed to we'll try harder.
No, I think it's more what's measured within that target because for some things, you have to wait for information to come back, be it from family members. What we don't want to do as a fund is pay out a death grant to the wrong person. And we have to ensure that anyone that might be able to receive that death grant has been considered. Sometimes that requires legal advice as well, where we, I've had instances before where someone got divorced 20 years ago and didn't update their nomination as to who that should go through. So some of these things can get very messy. And if the system's not recording, kind of stopping the process measurement time in that gap, when we're waiting, when the, I say we because we're all one, waiting for information to come back to be able to move it forward. I think that's where Matt meant that the targets aren't right, but it's the measuring. So if we've sent something out saying we need this information before we can make a payment, really our clock has to stop because we can't do anything. That's not saying it wouldn't be chased up, but it's wrong to say we've missed the target when we can't do anything about it. So it's ensuring that when we make the payments, they're being made to the right people. Otherwise, we'd have to pay them again to whoever else came out to say, actually, that should have gone to me. So it's always a difficult situation. But I think actually the framework behind it at the moment within the system isn't 100% correct in what it's measuring. So absolutely, we don't want to bring that target down. We need to do them within the right time period, but it has to be measured in the right way. I think that's the point Matt was trying to make.
Thank you, Chair. That clarified it a bit better. Just needs to be the correction that Steve Larter made, that according to the figures, it is an underspend, not an overspend, but we need clarification. Either the words are wrong or the chart's wrong. They both can't be right. We'll move on to item seven. The Pension Measurement Annual Report, sorry, Performance Measurement Annual Report from Joe.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So this is the annual performance measurement report. Really, we need to focus on the longer term performance. And this is measured by the fund's custodian, which up to the 31st of March was Northern Trust. We have since changed. But also how the fund compares to the rest of the LGPS, so the local authority average, which a company called PERC provide a local authority universe. The recommendation here is that the committee consider and discuss the report and agree whether any action or additional information is required. So the key points I'd like to raise here are the longer term performance at 10 years shows the fund returning 7% per annum. So this is slightly behind our benchmark return of 7.3%, but is comfortably ahead of both RPI and public sector average and also ahead of the return that we're looking for to meet the funding levels we require as set by the Actuary. On the attribution over the year, both asset allocation and stock selection were negative, with stock selection being more so. And Morgan Stanley Private Markets portfolio detracted the most over the year. We bring the details on managed performance to our investment meetings of the committee and Morgan Stanley will be coming in December to discuss their performance. The fund's strategic asset allocation currently is underweight equities and overweight bonds when compared to the local authority universe and is 0.5% ahead of the average LGPS fund performance over the year. So whilst we are behind our own strategic benchmark, we are ahead of the average LGPS fund. And there is always a caveat about apples and pears when comparing ourselves to other LGPS funds' performance. But I think it's still interesting to see. So the table at paragraph 4.11 sets out how Lincolnshire compares with the universe average and its ranking at one, three and five years showing 34th, 36th and 19th respectively and 10 years at 28th percentile. So generally within the top third across those time periods. The chart shows the distribution of returns across funds at three, five and 10 years and highlights Lincolnshire's position there with the red diamond. The chart at 4.12 on page 83 looks at the dispersion of five-year returns of LGPS funds. And Lincolnshire, you can see, is in the top left quadrant showing a lower than average level of risk and a higher than average level return, which is the quadrant that we would look to be in. So I'm happy to take any questions here. Thank you.
Councillor Hill? I think 7% over the 10 years is a good performance. But obviously, an MP, actually a local MP, is alleging that local government pension schemes, I don't know whether he was talking about ours in particular, A, are underperforming and B, are being charged far too much by fund managers. So I just wonder if, and I think there is a fair point to say that we benchmark against other local government. What is the benchmark against the universe of pension funds? My personal view is 7%, bearing in mind we need to be cautious being, dealing with pensions. But I just wonder if anybody could comment on whether those comments were fair for the Lincolnshire situation?
Yeah, I don't off the top of my head have the figures for some of the more global comparators. But I think generally the LGPS compares very well with, say, the Canadian funds, et cetera. I think the cost wise as well, I would have to disagree that we were expensive. I did some work after the statement had come out. And for the Lincolnshire fund, we were 0.4%. Our cost for managing 3.7 billion pounds, 0.4%, which is really very, very low and compares very favourably to, actually to the LGPS average, which was 0.5%. So Lincolnshire is cheaper than that. But again, it's not just about cost, it's about performance as well. Because we can have very cheap and we can also on the other side of that have very bad performance. So cheap isn't necessarily best, it's about the value for money. And there's been lots of work done about value for money for the LGPS over the years. We do benchmarking with a company called CEM that sets out how we compare to a comparable peer group that isn't just LGPS. So we could actually share that with the committee. So I would heavily defend our performance, that yes, 7% per annum is good over the long term. We will have years when it's really bad. If markets drop 40%, we aren't going to be making money, I would suggest. So it's about understanding that long term nature and we don't want to be shooting the lights out and getting 15% because if you can do plus 15, you know, you can probably do minus 30. So it is about that risk and return profile that we're looking for. But I don't know if George, with his knowledge of the LGPS as well, is going to agree that we are generally in a very good place across the LGPS.
I couldn't comment on a Lincolnshire comparison specifically because I've not seen the data. But in general terms, LGPS achieves better than global average costs from investment managers. That's the CEM work that Joe mentioned indicates that. But also work by a company called Clearglass, which demonstrates that all of the LGPS pools, but in particular Border to Coast, have driven very significant savings through the pooling process. The CEM work, which actually gives the comparison you were after councillor Hill, it looks at a global peer group. So for the fund I run in my day job, that includes a number of large American and Canadian schemes and it'll be similar for Joe, but funds of a similar size to Lincolnshire. So I think sharing that will give you a more depth of understanding of how you compare in those areas. But in general, LGPS comes out very favourably in these comparisons.
I mean, it would be helpful to have a sort of formal report on that because I thought 7% over the, think of all the turmoil there's been over the last 10 years in the finance markets. I think that would be useful to show. And I think we've always got to be careful that, yes, you can get, as Joe said, you can get massive returns, but equally you can get massive losses and we are responsible for people's pensions. So I think some sort of report would be either within the committee or without it would be useful just to reassure us that a claim has been made. And I think it's very important that we make sure that we are, you know, we are looking at ourselves very hard to make sure that we can assure ourselves that we're doing as well as we can with our own pension fund.
What I perhaps suggest is then I pull together some information and share it with the committee over the next few weeks. And then actually in this annual report next year, pull in some of that CEM data. It will be a year's lag because we don't generally, we haven't generally got their report by this point or by the time we need to write these. But if we can, I will do. But I can actually, it made a note for next year's annual performance report to bring in some of those other comparators.
Councillor Roberts?
Just a couple of questions. Obviously, we're having some new funds, there's pouring going on. I think George Graham mentioned that we've been able to say there's potentially going to be some savings in our costs when we have more pools coming in from Border to Coast. Do we know how much that savings are going to be yet?
No, we haven't got that information yet. I mean, the governance costs, which will be one that will reduce because it will be spread across 18 funds rather than 11. I think the governance cost last year was about 384,000 pounds for the year. So it seems a very precise figure from off the top of my head, but I think it is about right. So that will obviously reduce because the governance, whilst it will increase, it won't increase to the same proportion as the number of funds that it will be spread across. The asset under management costs, most of the costs now that we have through Border to Coast are based on the asset under management costs. So the costs within the global equity alpha fund depend on what we have invested in that fund and it's split proportionately. So they're much harder to predict at this point going forwards because we don't yet know what the partner funds coming in, where they're going to be allocating their funds. And for a period of time, they will stay within the funds they're in and then that will transition over a period of time. So unfortunately, I can't give you the exact clarity overall of what those savings will be, but we will report them and the expected savings as soon as we're aware. They will be brought to the committee.
Thank you. Just one extra question. You mentioned, obviously, over the 10-year period of time, we've, the average is 7% growth. What's the minimum we need to grow before potentially the contributions have to increase? Is there a tipping point?
So that's, in doing the work that the Actuary does, they look at what the expected future investment return is when they're setting the contribution rate. So that's the discount rate, basically. So at the last valuation, the expectation was that we would return 4% per annum over the longer term. I think we averaged at about 3.9% per annum. I'm looking across to the slightly higher. 4.3, sorry, I've got so many figures in my head. 4.3%, so we've done that over the three-year period. But of course, this is looking over the longer term and gets reset every three years. So the discount rate we're using for the 2025 valuation period is 4.7%. So there's other things that are included within that. So it's a bit difficult to say what the long term we need. Basically, what we want to do is ensure we're ahead of inflation over the longer term because that's how the benefits are increased and the care pension is increased. We want to be ahead of, salary increases are not as important now, but are still a factor within there. And we, you know, I think 5, 6, 7% per annum is a good figure to be comfortable over the long term. So they, sorry, I can't give you a direct answer because there isn't a figure that pushes us into tipping point. And we have had periods where we've had three years of underperformance. There have been periods across five years where it's been negative. But it's the benefit we have is that long term perspective that we are still going to be paying pensions in 50, 60, 70 years. So, you know, perhaps even looking 10 years isn't long enough. We look regularly to ensure our managers are doing what they need to do. But actually, that long term fund performance, we need to really be thinking long term because that's what we're here for. So sorry if that doesn't answer it fully, but...
I'd just like to ask a question on the private equity debt side of things. There have been a number of concerns raised by the media around that. How much are we invested in it and how are Border to Coast managing that?
So Border to Coast don't manage that for us at the moment. It's with Morgan Stanley. So we have about 21% across private equity, private debt and infrastructure across those private markets. So what I would say is that Morgan Stanley will be here in December. So perhaps that might be, rather than me giving you my view on that, which I'm not an expert on, Morgan Stanley will be able to provide you their view of where markets are now, where they expect them to go going forwards, what they're looking at. And also the allocation to private markets that we have will form part of that discussion in November. We probably have a reasonably high allocation compared to, I think, on the table showing on private markets against other LGPS funds. But it is an area that government are obviously wanting us to invest more in. It is an asset class that sits well with pension funds because it is longer term. You know, there is an expected return premium for tying your money up for longer. Obviously, there will be times when it doesn't play out. So I think that might be a really good question to ask Morgan Stanley. And we will obviously be bringing them to that manager workshop. So there will be lots of time that morning to really get to grips and understand these things before they bring a formal paper to the committee in that afternoon. So hopefully that's...
Thank you. Sorry, in that case, I think we, sorry, we note the report and move on to item eight, the annual report and accounts.
Thank you. The report brings to the committee the draft annual report and the external auditor will present their year-end report on the pension fund accounts.
auditor will present their year end report on the pension fund accounts. The recommendation is that the committee approve the annual report and consider and discuss the feedback from the external auditor in their report. The pension fund annual report for 2025 is attached at appendix A and the content and format of this follows the new guidelines issued by the Scheme Advisory Board. The report, the annual report itself is an excellent read. It provides that annual picture of the pension fund picking up all aspects of the work that's been undertaken during the year. So it gives the committee board and the general public an excellent, some excellent information on the fund itself. Paragraph one point three looks specifically at the statement of accounts which are contained within the annual report and provides an explanation and details of the thirty first of March private market unlisted valuations that we've received over the summer. Because there's a significant time delay on receiving this information, it isn't all available to us when we publish draft accounts at the end of May for the statutory deadline. So we review those as they're received over the summer and then look to incorporate those into the accounts when they're received. For this year, by the end of September, that had increased the value of those assets within the financial statements by three point nine million. So a relatively modest number and a relatively modest increase from that previously reported. I'm very happy to take any questions on the annual report before handing over to Paul and Mohammed from KPMG, who will take you through their annual year end report, which is attached in the papers as well at appendix B.
Now, KPM, are there any questions? KPMG could.
Thank you. First of all, can I give apologies to Rush, who can't be here this week because of a holiday. So I'm going to talk for him. And can we also thank the finance team for the help on the audit? As always, they have been great again and helped us with a smooth process. So if we turn to page four of our report, which is page two two four on your pack, I'll just talk through the key audit findings and then pass over to Mohammed to talk through the detail. So our key audit findings are on the management override of controls. We found no report for misstatements or indicators of fraud in our testing. There is one control deficiency which is noted on page twenty-two of our report. And this is the same as was in last year's report. It's around the kind of journals and the posting of the journals in that there's no segregation of controls. But there are kind of other, as we put in page twenty-two, there are some compensating controls that the management have in place to alleviate this control deficiency. But we understand it's down to the system which is used in place for the journals, which is also in the council system. So issues there really for noting as it was last year. So going back to page four, the other key accounting estimates. First of all, the valuation of level one and two pulled investment vehicles and segregating investments. There weren't any kind of deviations noted in the valuations and they were all within our acceptable range. So we found no issues around the valuation and that they are appropriate. Secondly, the valuation of the level three pulled investment vehicles. Again, we found the valuation of these investments were based on auditing NAV and they were appropriate. And the third one was the actuarial evaluation. So this was reviewed and we found it to be appropriate. So on the right hand side of page four, there is the outstanding matters. Now, this report was written about two weeks ago. So since then, we have now finished our work on the level three investments. So that is no longer outstanding. So all that really is left is just the screening and the testing of the journals. And then on completion, the management representation letter and the finalization and the signing of the accounts. So before I move, pass over to Mohammed, are there any questions on page four?
Could you just explain the issue on the journals?
Yes. So on page twenty-two of our report, we set out there about the journals. So normally in an accounting system, you would have a segregation of duties over the journals, such as one person can post a journal, another person then authorizes. But we understand that due to the system in place here, the journals are posted manually and then they're not authorized within the system. And that's the segregation of duties which is missing in this step. But there are, as I said, compensating controls in the Claire and the team then do kind of review the journals afterwards after they've been posted. It's just that initial posting which isn't authorized.
Yeah, so it is ordered, it is checked and it is then reapproved. So are we, are we on audit risk and audit approach on page six? That's my first one, but I'm sorry if I've lost them.
Can we pick that up in a minute?
Yeah, okay.
So I was just going to say that in terms of the volume of manual journals that we have, it's very, very small as well. The majority of our posts are coming through from feeds. And we do, on that quarterly basis, we will take a listing of those and check for the appropriateness of them. But it's really quite nice because we're a very small team. So it's very easy to keep a handle over those from a management perspective.
Okay. Can we carry on with the report when we get?
Sorry, can I just follow up on that? Do you do a download then of the system of what's actually happened rather than what should have happened? Because I know audits have been very hooked up on this in the past about having a process before the event, but then it can still be input wrong. So actually, it's more important to test what's gone into the system rather than what should have gone into the system.
Yeah, so we have a look at what's in the system and then we look back at the documentation. So for example, if we're proposing a journal, the majority of journals that we do in the year, say, would be a correction of coding for our contributions where they might, we're getting, we've got just under three hundred employers who are paying us maybe three or four different types of contribution in the month. We check the coding of those. So we're taking the primary record of those and then looking at what's in the ledger to make sure that that's the case. And then if there are any journals required, we will be doing those journals. That's the same again for benefits. We will be looking at the benefits paid, do the records that were provided by West Yorkshire, agree to the postings which have ended up in our ledger, and then there'll be journal, manual journal corrections for those. So actually, the process, we come at everything from two sides. So we will look at that listing of everything. Does it make, does a journal make sense? But then we'll also be looking at the primary postings which have led to the journal being processed to make sure that they also make sense to us.
We'll come on to your question in a minute, councillor. Could you carry on, please?
Yes, thank you. So I'll hand over now to Mohammed, who'll talk you through the investments from page eight onwards.
So on page eight, we have the risk that in level one, level two and level three investments are not complete, do not exist or are not accurately recorded. In order to address this risk, we have performed the following procedures. Understanding the process over the completeness, existence and accuracy of level one, level two and level three investments, we also obtained direct confirmation from fund managers and custodians. We vouch the sales and purchases to the custodian report and also recalculated the change in market value. We have not noted any material difference in relation to the above procedures. The next risk we have is of valuation of level one, level two and other level three investments. In order to address this risk, we have used our iRadar, our independent pricing team in Germany, to value the level one and level two assets. For level three, we obtained latest audit financial statements and compared the net assets values with the unordered capital statements at the date of financial statements. At the time of drafting this report, the level three investments were outstanding. But as of now, our testing is complete and we have not noted any material difference in the valuation. Next, on page thirteen of our report, we have risked that the actual position of the fund is not appropriately presented in the financial statements. In order to address this risk, we have engaged our KPM, the actual specialist, to evaluate the assumptions used by the management specialist in calculating the actual position. Our testing is now complete and we have not found any misstatement in this regard. I'll now pass back to Paul to present the remainder of the plan.
Okay, thank you. So if we now turn to the appendix, so on page seventeen, as auditors, these are the required communications we have to give to you as those charge with governance. They're all kind of green, kind of buttons there, apart from the last one, which is just the red one, because we can't certify this at the moment, which, all the details there are in page seventeen at the bottom. Page eighteen and nineteen just confirms our independence as auditors. Page twenty and twenty-one, as auditors, we are required to report to you any adjustments to the accounts or any adjustments that we proposed that weren't changed. As noted there, we're pleased to say that there weren't any changes to put through in the accounts. And as you said there, anything kind of greater than one point seven million has to be communicated and there weren't any adjustments needed. And then page twenty-two is the point I talked about earlier on. And then page twenty-three onwards is just some kind of reading for you, just some background towards quality and ISA two forty. So hopefully that's given you another view of our report. Happy to take any questions that anyone has.
Councillor Hill? I'll just come back to the management override of controls and according to the auditors, a risk of fraud, which, you know, so I'm not entirely sure that the planned response, adequately, adequately response to that concern. So I just wonder if we could just walk through that again?
Okay, so as.
I mean, basically, it's about having separate people checking, which is basic.
Segregation duties.
Yeah, the issue is, it's the council system doesn't allow us to do that. So unless the pension fund had its own general ledger system, we're at the mercy of the council system as to whether or not that enables us to have those segregation duties. On the issue of it being potential fraud, this is movements of transactions within the fund. It's not cash going out anywhere. So I think the chance of fraud is highly unlikely because it's just moving where things have been miscoded. But I don't know if, because this obviously comes up in the council's audit every year as well. So I don't know if Michelle would like to add.
So the key risk here is the same as it is with the LCC accounts in that management are using due influence to try and influence what we're reporting in our accounts and trying to skew maybe what the position is to make it look better than what it is or to make it look different to what it is. And the key thing here is there's no internal control in the system to stop that from happening. All of the controls are outside the system, but there are controls outside the system to stop that. KPMG will raise this every year in the pension fund and in the LCC accounts, trying to integrate this kind of control into our current ERP system. It would be difficult and probably not worth the time and money that it would cost to do it. I mean, some of the controls that I can tell you about is that our section one five one officer doesn't have access to the system to do any of that stuff. I have limited access. So the kind of management push to try and present a different picture to the reality is physically not there. And all the other controls that we've got in place to look at the, and journals are effectively just an accounting transaction. It's just putting a plus in one place and a minus in the other. So it's not, it's not any real cash or real money. And as I say, we've got controls for the LCC accounts and the pensions accounts outside of the system to check that they are reasonable and that they've got working papers to sit behind them to evidence the transaction in place. And that is one of the key checks that the auditors will do for their sample. They will look at that backing evidence to make sure that those journals are appropriate.
All I need to know is that basic accountancy, there's somebody overseeing somebody else and a diminutive. I'm not sure I'm hearing that's what's happening.
And in terms of our manual journals, that is what happens. So journals are predominantly prepared by the two most junior members of the team and prior to them being processed are checked predominantly by Josh before they are processed. So we have procedures which carry out quarterly checks. And in those checks being completed, Josh will have oversight of those journals as they're processed.
I think the control here is that there isn't a button in the system that allows that to happen. So in terms of the system documenting that, you absolutely cannot see that. In terms of it happening, it absolutely is.
Two things, much smaller scale, but we use Sage. That doesn't have the dual authorization either. It's just single input. So we have exactly the same procedure that I review what my staff's input after the event to make sure it concurs with what should have happened. So the controls you've got, I think, are perfectly satisfactory. The other thing as well I want to say is, you know, this is a huge piece of work by the team. It takes a lot to do this document, prepare all the information for the auditors. And it's really good that, A, it's been done on time and, to be fair to the auditors, that the audits are up to date. There's a lot of councils and pension funds that have not been in that position over recent years. And it's really pleasing that Lincolnshire has kept on its timetable and again, is going to conclude the audit within the timeframe. So that doesn't want to be underestimated because that's a very, very good position to be in.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? If not, then I propose that we, sorry, the recommendation is that we approve this annual report. Can I have someone to propose that? Councillor? Sorry, sorry, Steve. And second, councillor Woods or councillor Hill, I'm quite happy. Thank you. Oh, God, yeah. Okay, now we've, now we've done that. All four? Then I won't ask who's against because we've got everybody there. And we'll move on to agenda item nine, the whole fund 2025 valuation results and draft funding strategy. It's going to be talked through by Claire.
I will say a very few words before handing over to Matt and Kelly from Barnet Waddingham. So the paper brings today to the committee the whole fund results and the draft FSS, which you've already had some training on this morning. The recommendation is that the committee consider and discuss the report, approve the whole fund 2025 valuation results, the draft FSS, ahead of it going out for consultation with all our employers. At the committee meeting in July, you remember that you approved the draft assumptions to be used in the valuation. These, along with the membership and cash flow data, has been worked on by the Actuary over the summer to calculate those whole fund results, which will be presented to you today. The whole fund results will then, once agreed, will then filter into employer results, which we will start to issue to employers from next week, along with the draft funding strategy statement for consultation. I won't say any more because it'd be much more interesting to listen to Matt and Kelly, who will take you through their presentation on the whole fund results.
Thank you. So yes, the 2025 valuation is currently underway and we can present to you the initial results of that valuation alongside a reminder of those assumptions and methods that we're using to produce them. So move on to the agenda slide, please. We'll start off by looking at what's happened over the last three years since the 2022 valuation. We'll then cover the assumptions underpinning this valuation. And then we can present you with the initial results based on those assumptions. And we'll finish off by looking at an overview of the updates to the funding strategy statement, conscious that there's been training on that already. So we'll touch on that very briefly. But if we can move on. So what's happened since the last valuation then? On the next slide, we can see that investment returns have actually been better than expected. So that is good news. It's not been the case for every LGPS fund out there. So it does put us in a good position to start with. And that has certainly helped to reduce costs at this valuation. However, it would have escaped your attention that there's been a cost of living crisis in recent years. We've seen record high inflation and this has directly fed through to the pension increase awards and the annual revaluation of benefits. So in the first year, we can see ten point one percent pension increase there, six point seven percent in the second year. So these are, these are very costly for the fund. It is worth noting, though, that at the time of the last valuation, we knew there was going to be a. It is worth noting though, that at the time of the last valuation, we knew there was going to be a period of very high inflation. So we, we did factor that into our assumptions back then. And now we've come through the worst of that, we don't need to factor in quite as much inflation as we'd look forward. So there's a kind of offsetting effect there that the more positive outlook for inflation going forward largely cancels out the, the actual costs of inflation we've seen. So overall, looking back and looking forward, inflation's had a, a neutral impact. We've also, as, as mentioned earlier, refined our view of the, the discount rate. So this is the assumption for future investment returns and we're assuming a higher discount rate at this valuation. The impact of that is to reduce the value of liabilities because effectively what we're seeing is we can put a bit more reliance on investment returns going forward. It's important to note that the discount rate doesn't actually affect the cost of the benefits, it is just an assumption. It doesn't affect the amount of benefits that's actually building up day by day. So if we go to the, the next slide. Yeah, so this provides a little bit more information about the investment returns over the last three years. As we said, there was an annualized return of four point three percent and that compares with the assumed return of four point zero percent. So better, better experienced than assumed and that helps to reduce costs. Next slide please. So we, we talk quite a lot about the costs of the scheme and by that obviously we mean the benefits and the expenses that the fund needs to pay out. Those costs are met through a combination of contributions, both from employers and employees. But of course, we're also reliant on the fund's investment returns. So there is a balance that has to be met there. If we set contributions too low, then we run the risk of becoming too reliant on those investment returns. So we need to make sure that we're, we're funding in a, in an appropriate way there. We do need to consider the short term affordability to employers. But balancing that against the kind of longer term sustainability of those contributions because we don't want to come back at, at future valuations and ask for a much higher rate of contributions. Onto the next slide. Yeah, so it's important to remember that the valuation, it, it doesn't affect the cost of the scheme. That the benefits will cost whatever they cost, we, we can't really know what that will be in advance, we can only make estimates. And so on one side, what we do is we have to estimate the benefits that will get paid out of the fund. And on the other side, we have to estimate that the fund, that the investment returns that the fund's assets will deliver. And the, the kind of balancing item there then is the contributions that we ask employers to pay. So that's really the short term objective of the valuation, it's to set contribution rates over the next three years for every employer in the fund. The funding valuation also influences the, the investment strategy as well. Because obviously when we're thinking about investments, we need to consider the, the benefit profile of the fund, the maturity of the fund. Because ultimately, we need those investments to produce sufficient income and returns so that the fund can pay the benefits as they arise in future. And on the next slide, calculating liabilities. So how, how do we actually do this? Well, it starts off, we get a lot of data from the fund's administrators. This covers every member in the fund and within that data, we see all the benefit entitlements for each member. What we then try to do is for every member in the fund over each of the next one hundred years, we project out every possible benefit payment we think could be paid. So there's a lot of assumptions in that, so there's a lot of probability stuff going on in the background there. For example, the likelihood of these benefits actually being paid, how long they'll be paid for. And that's where the assumptions come in. However, if you add up the monetary value of all these cash flows, what we find and what, what we have found is that the total amount of the benefits built up so far comes to a monetary value of nine billion pounds. So that's essentially the amount of cash we'd need to hold today if there were no investment returns at all in the future. So the next stage then, on the next slide, is to therefore allow for the impact of investment returns. So what this is doing is really illustrating the importance of investment returns. And it's basically demonstrating the power of compound interest over time. So what we do is we, this is actually real terminology, we discount each of these cash flows back to the present day using the discount rate, so the assumed rate of investment return. And when we do that, this nine billion pounds, it reduces quite substantially to three billion pounds. So what that's saying is that actually we think the fund could hold three billion pounds today and then the investment returns over time will grow that to the nine billion pounds or so that we're going to need to pay those benefits as they become due over the long term. So I think that illustrates the importance of the discount rate and in general, how actually our assumptions can have quite a big impact on the valuation outcomes. So, so the next section is to look at those assumptions in more detail then. And if we move on, what you can do is broadly split the assumptions into two main categories. You've got financial assumptions, so things that lead investment returns, things like inflation over the long term. These help us to estimate the amount of benefits that will come into payment. And then you've got the demographic assumptions, so how long are people going to live for? How many years of pension payments do we need to fund for? So those demographic assumptions help us to estimate in any given year in the future the likelihood that benefits will be in payment for each member. Next slide please. The key financial assumptions are the discount rate, which we've spoken about. Inflation, because that has a, a direct impact on the pension increase. I think it was yesterday we saw the September figure for CPI was three point eight percent. So that means next April, all the main benefits in the fund are going to go up by three point eight percent. So we need to make an assumption about how that figure might look, not just now, but over the long term. And then salary increases becoming less important nowadays. But it does have an impact on certain members who have previously built up final salary benefits under the old scheme. Their benefits, part of them anyway, will be linked to what their salary is at retirement. So that means we need an assumption for what that future salary growth might look like. Onto the next slide. The discount rate is one of the most important ones. As I say, it's all about what rate of investment return we, we might get in future from the fund's assets. So the natural place to start is looking at the investment strategy. And we've carried out a lot of analysis on that and what we do is we come up with an expected rate of return on the fund's assets. However, as actuaries, we need to be prudent, we need to build in a bit of caution in case the future isn't quite as, as good as we hope. As you can see, there's lots of risks here that the fund needs to contend with. So what we do is from this expected return is slice a little bit off and that in effect creates a buffer, so a little bit of headroom in case we need it going forward. And ultimately that helps to secure the solvency of the fund and make sure that members' benefits are secure. There is quite a lot of judgment involved in deciding how big this buffer should be. However, we have calculated, carried out additional calculations here. To be honest, it's quite complicated. But what we have done is projected thousands of economic simulations into the future. So each of those simulations is a kind of pathway that the fund could potentially find itself having to navigate. And having done that modeling, when we analyzed it, we found that under seventy-two percent of scenarios, the fund is able to achieve an, an investment return that's higher than what we're assuming. I mean, I mean, it is just a model, it's not perfect, it can't possibly predict the future. But it is, there is a tool to help inform the level of buffer that we should include. And all the indications are that that leads to a moderate level of prudence being present in our assumptions, which is, which is good. So just to summarize that then, on the next slide, we have an expected rate of return for the fund's assets, which our analysis produced a figure of six point two percent over the long term. We knock off a bit for prudence, which is one and a half percent. And that gets us to the, the discount rate, four point seven percent. So that's a prudent view of investment returns looking forward. And an increase there of point seven percent since the last valuation, which reduces the value that we place on the liabilities. If we can move on to the next slide. So that's all the financial assumptions or a focus on the discount rate there. The key demographic assumptions, mortality is the main one here. That, that helps to determine for each member when the stream of benefit payments will stop. We also need to make an assumption for the retirement age, that tells us when the benefit payments will start. So then together, those two assumptions tell us how many years of benefit payments we need to fund for, for each member. And then there's commutation, so this is when members can choose to exchange a, a bit of their pension, take a bit more cash when they retire. Instead of taking the whole lot as an, an annual pension for life, so we take that into account as well. And then there's the withdrawal assumption, so this is the rate at which employees leave the workforce. And when that happens, obviously they stop building up benefits. So that is also factored in to the valuation. And to, to set these assumptions, what we do is we look back over recent years, look at the actual experience. We compare those with the assumptions we made last time. And if there are any big differences, what we might do is, is tweak them a bit going forward. So that they're more reflective of what we're actually seeing on, on the ground, so to speak. Onto the next slide then please. So as I say, mortality assumption i- is the big one here. Over the last few months, we've got our own longevity team at Barnet Waddingham. They have been analyzing the mortality rates in the Lincolnshire Pension Fund over recent years. And having done that, they then calculate life expectancies based on what that analysis is showing. So how long we think members are going to live for. That assumption though has to be appropriate not just for today, has to work for many future years. So the next stage is to try and project that forward into the future and there's a bit more, a bit more judgment involved in that process. But if we go on to the next slide, we can see the recommendations coming from the longevity team. Third column demonstrates that life expectancies have gone up. So based on the analysis of what's actually been happening in the fund, we think that members will live a little bit longer than we thought three years ago, which is obviously really good news for members. From the fund's perspective, it means we need to find a little bit more money in order to pay those benefits for a little bit longer. So this, this increases liabilities as you might expect and it also increases the contributions that we need to ask employers to pay. All else being equal, that is, there are a lot of moving parts in the valuation. So I'll hand over to Kelly now to show us what the initial results of the valuation are, what the actual outcomes are, taking all of this into account.
Thanks, Matt. So if we go on to the next slide please. So this is high level fund results here, so on the right hand side is the twenty twenty-two valuation. Sorry, the writing is pretty small there, but funding level was one hundred and one percent and the fund was in surplus of approximately twenty million. As you can see on the left here, these bar charts have risen, so at this valuation, the fund is in a better position, it's a hundred and ten percent funded and there is a higher surplus of three hundred and thirty million this time. So the assets have increased and also the liabilities have, but the assets have increased by more. So if we go to the next slide please. This chart here just shows the analysis of the change in surplus. So these are the reasons why the fund has now in more surplus and the funding level has improved. So all of the green bars there are showing an increase in the surplus and all of the red bars are showing a decrease. So I'll take you through just a couple of them at the minute. So the first couple of green bars are the seventeen and the twenty-nine. So the seventeen first, that is the contributions versus accrual. So that means that the contributions that have come into the fund have been higher than the cost of accrual of members accruing benefits. The twenty-nine, as we've already spoke about this, but this is the investment returns, they've been slightly higher than what we anticipated at four percent and the returns have been, they've annualized over the three years of four point three percent, so they're slightly higher. So this has gained the position and the, the surplus has increased. The large green bar of the hundred and eighty-seven, that is due to a change in market conditions. So that is eleven for the same approach as twenty twenty-two, but rather than looking at the market conditions at thirty first of March twenty twenty-two, that is looking at them at thirty first of March twenty twenty-five. So as you can see, that's been beneficial for the fund. And I'll just skip over to the next large green bar because it's similar. And that is the change in financial assumptions. So that is changing approach from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. So that is where the derivation of the assumptions, the financial assumptions have changed. The prudence comes into this part here, so as our prudence level has slightly decreased, that has been favorable for the fund and has increased the position. And then just to go back to those red bars, so the first two red bars of the minus thirty-one and minus two fifty. So the minus thirty-one is the salary increase experience. So that just means that salary increases have been higher than we originally anticipated at twenty twenty-two. It's smaller, it's not as significant as Matt did say earlier because the final salary link is less as it has been due to the benefit structure. And the large red bar there, the minus two hundred and fifty, that is the pension increase experience. So as Matt touched on, we've had high pension increase orders of ten point one percent and six point seven, which have been higher than our long term assumptions. So this has brought the surplus down and it's offset the good experience that we've seen. And the demographic assumption, so that minus fifty-four, which is fourth from the end there, that is the change in demographic assumption, so that is the assumptions that Matt spoke about in mortality. And we've generally seen that life expectancies have increased very slightly, which is increasing the liabilities, which will then decrease the surplus. So the, the bar, the final bar on the right hand side there is the surplus, which is three hundred and twenty-five, which compares to eighteen at the twenty twenty-two evaluation. So overall, positive, positive results that we're seeing. If we could move on to the next slide please. So we have just put this slide in here, basically for reference. So these are the funding levels of not all of our funds, but the majority of our funds that we advise. We have put Lincolnshire in there, you can see they are fourth from the right hand side there. And the, so the, the kind of purple blue bar, that's the twenty twenty-two funding position and the pink bar is the twenty twenty-five funding position. So as you can see, Lincolnshire are towards the higher end on, on funding level, but they are well within the pack. So they're, they're not an outlier or anything, they're quite safely sitting there at a hundred and ten percent. As you can see on the Lincolnshire charts, the funding level has increased quite significantly from the last valuation. That is the general trend across funds, but you'll see a couple towards the right hand side there. Those funds have actually seen a decrease in funding position. And in quite a lot of those cases, it is, tends to be due to investment returns, that may be a big factor in that. So yeah, if we could move on to the next slide please. So when it comes to setting the contribution rates, so we look at the funding level of all of our employers and we then determine a total rate, which is made up of a primary rate and a secondary rate. So the primary rate is the employer's share of the cost of new benefits. So it's not looking at any of the past benefits that have already been accrued. It is based on the membership profile of each employer and it only relates to current active employees. And if the employer sits within a pool, so for example, if they're in a multi-academy trust pool or if they're in the Lincolnshire County Council pool, then we'll be looking at the membership of the full pool and not just one employer. And this relates to a percentage of pay, so the primary rate will be a percentage of payroll, per employer, per employer, sorry, or per pool. And then the second part is the secondary rate. And the secondary rate is an adjustment to the primary rate to allow for any surplus or any deficit. So if employer's funding position is below a hundred percent and they're in deficit, then we'd look to make good that deficit over the recovery period and that would be an adjustment to the primary rate. So for example, that may be a positive adjustment that would bring the total contribution rate up by a couple of percent. If the employer is in surplus, then we have that threshold that we talked about in the funding strategy statement of a hundred and twenty percent. So we generally like to see employers at individual level over a hundred and twenty percent before offering back surplus and that's just for stability purposes. We like to be cautious as well, just so that their funding level remains, remains in a good position. And the secondary rate can be if the employers are in deficit and they have to pay money back, they can be in monetary amounts. If they are in surplus- If they are in surplus and over the 120% threshold, then they will generally be negative secondary percentages of payroll. And these will all be in the rates and adjustment certificate, which will be part of the valuation report, which is released in March. But we will be looking at giving employers draft contribution rates in the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. So this is at fund level, so obviously all different employers will have different experiences, different pools will have different experiences as well, but at the whole fund level, so that's taken all of the assets and liabilities within the fund. We have on the first row of the table there, we have the total future service rate. So that is the amount that would need to be paid to cover future benefits. So it's 24.1 at this valuation. Last valuation, it was higher, it was up at 30.3. Then we take off the member contributions because the member contributions are, they're required to pay. So that stayed stable between the three year period at 6.2. We take an average of the member contributions over the full membership. And that brings us down to our fund primary rate. So at the previous valuation, it was 24.1, and we've seen a decrease down to 17.9% at this valuation. And that generally is the case across most of our LGPS funds, that we do advise, we are seeing reductions in the primary rate. And if we go on to the next slide, please. These are the reasons for it. So it's a similar chart to before when we looked at the funding level. The two green bars there are the two main reasons, and that is the change in the market conditions and the change in the financial assumptions, which has driven the primary rate down, the most significant down to the 17.9%. The little red bar there, the point five is just that increase due to the demographic assumptions, which we also seen in the funding level chart. And next slide, please. And we've also, just to be helpful, put Lincolnshire in there across our other funds just to show where they lie in terms of the primary rate. So again, same colours as before, the purple blue colour is 2022 primary rate and the pink is 2025 primary rate. So as you can see, Lincolnshire has decreased their primary rate, but as you can see across all of the funds that we had the information for available at the time, that is the general trend. Most funds are decreasing their primary rates due to multiple factors. And again, Lincolnshire is within that pack there, they're not an outlier. For, these are just obviously a sample amount, we do have more funds and so obviously other funds with different advisors. But yeah, we thought it'd be helpful to show you their position. So all looking very positive in general, and we're hoping that employers will also see that it's positive as well when it comes to employer results. But just a caveat, different employers are obviously in different positions, they will have different funding levels, and that might mean that they'll have different contribution rates as well. This is, this is just purely at whole fund level. And just to move on to the next slide, please. So committee have already had funding strategy statement training. There are a few duplication of slides here, so I will just go through this very, very quickly. So as Matt spoke about this morning, there has been new guidance released earlier this year. And the focus is just to get the funding strategy statement to be similar across all funds, so it's easier to read and it's user friendly for employers so that they understand what they're entitled to and how the contributions are set. Also, there's an engagement plan, which I'll touch on in a second. If you could go to the next slide, please. So yeah, this just kind of on the left here, employers should be able to understand how they're being treated and how their contributions are being calculated. They should be able to understand through the funding strategy statement which group of employers that they belong to and what that means for new entrants, exits, everything that is listed in the funding strategy document. Our funding assumptions will be in there, the ones that Matt had discussed earlier, we'll have the level of prudence in there. We have how the assumptions vary over time, we have assumptions that we will use when employers exit the fund. So that is all within the funding strategy statement. And we have timing and security as well. So per employer group, there's different time horizons that we set contributions over. And that will be the surplus spreading period, which we did speak about this morning, and the deficit recovery period as well. So yeah, that's just a short summary of what is in there. If we go to the next slide, please. We went into these in more detail, but these are the kind of key points, the key considerations that are in the funding strategy statement. Managing the surpluses and deficit as part of the valuation process and how we look to make good any deficit or maybe give back some surplus to employers who are very well funded. We had talked about this morning as well, the introduction, introduction, sorry, of pooling academies at trust level. And that just means that they'll share experience and hopefully have more stable contribution rates going forward. We have the ill health and death in service self insurance policy, which is across all employers except the Lincolnshire County Council pool. And then we have policies within there on exit credit. So that's when employers are leaving the fund and they find themselves in a surplus on their exit basis. This is where the exit credit policy will come in. So yeah, the funding strategy statement just brings all of these policies together into the one document. And if we go to the next slide, please. And again, sorry, we have been through this this morning, but general trend is employers will be getting their results in the next month or so, along with the draft funding strategy statement and the consultation period will begin. So employers can then feedback once they have looked through that. We'll also be producing webinars, which will explain employers' results alongside their results. Then we'll have one to one sessions in November for any employers who would like to discuss their rates. They can come along and speak to us and the fund and any issues that they, they have. And consultation will come to a close on the 19th of December, which on the beginning of the year will then be reviewed by the committee and board. And any changes will then be notified to employers. And then we'll look at confirming employer contribution rates around February time, and then these will be part of the valuation report, which we will issue before the 31st of March. And that will have all of the contribution rates in there beginning 1st of April 2026. And next slide, please. Yep, that brings our presentation to a close. So we'd welcome any questions that you have on that section.
councillor Roberts?
Right, it's more of a general question and it might include Joe and a team, but I've dealt with pensions for 30 years. And I've sold pensions many years ago, and I see on people's pay slips what they pay into a money purchase scheme, a defined contribution scheme. I believe that, and I'm sure you guys do, believe that a final salary pension is at some point going to become unaffordable. And knowing what's available in the private sector compared with the, you know, the public sector, the fairness in it is, is unbelievable. There's a massive difference in between what you get in the private sector and what you get in the public sector. Not just obviously that, you get health benefits, good sick pay, et cetera, et cetera. I, I can't see that that is sustainable. In which case, if at some point the decision was made that it was no longer affordable to keep doing a final salary scheme, how would that affect the fund going forward? Because you guys are projecting naturally, projecting going forward 100 years. So how would that affect if at some point in the future, the scheme was closed for future employees? How would that affect the fund going forward? And obviously you've still got the people that are still in the pension that are still keep paying. How would that affect it if all of a sudden there was no more new employees actually putting in? That might be Joe as well, sorry to sort of, sort of a mixture really.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to start that one off. We're not actually final salary now, we're career average, so that change was made in 2014. So it's based on each year's pension pot is separate based on what you've built in that year. So it's not all related to final salary now. There are some protections there, there were people that have already built that up. And I think the other thing is, I will always defend this, but it is part of the overall pay package. So it's remembering the total remuneration that our staff get. And the LGPS generally is for, you know, the, the average LGPS person is a part time female earning, I think about 15, 16, 18,000 pounds a year. So it's remembering that. The average pension in Lincolnshire is three and a half thousand pounds a year. So not gold plated, but does take those members out of having to claim benefits when they retire, that get paid for, by taxpayers anyway, just in another way. So that, that's my defence over. But as, if it were to close to new members, and there are some employers that do decide to close their element, that, that can choose to do that, what generally happens there is that actually the contribution rate for the employers increases over a period of time because they've not got the new money coming in that's getting invested. So it kind of means, you know, those employers where we have very few active members left in there and are closed, so there's no new ones coming in, they'll be the ones that have really high primary rates because those employers that are in there, they're aging, they're getting closer to their pension age, the money they're putting in doesn't have that, that time to grow, and there's no new money coming in behind them to help with that employer. So that's, that's one of the, probably the key things that would happen if we closed. In terms of the fund itself, well, obviously we'd just be getting much more mature, we'd have to reassess our investment strategy. We're moving probably to, well, we are moving to cash flow negative from this valuation forward. So we will be looking to use some of the income that we get into the fund to be able to pay pensions, some of the investment income, which we've not had to do previously, we've been cash flow positive. But obviously with rates coming down, we're not getting as much money in. So around the edges, we will have to tweak our investment strategy. The more mature we get, the more cash flow negative we get, we get to the point where we're having to sell investments to be able to pay pensions rather than just rely on investment income coming in on top of contributions because they would all be reducing. So it would be a managed process out to the time the last person in there still gets their pension. But obviously, you know, if this was just closing the LGPS, then that would be 86 funds across England and Wales and those funds in Scotland that would all be looking to manage that in the same way. So it would just be managing out based on what was put in front of us, but it would be more expensive for employers over that period of time until their last person left. I don't know if there's anything else on, Matt had.
Yeah, I think just on the, the wider point you make about the sustainability of, of the scheme. The career average scheme was brought in following a review by Lord Hutton in 2011, I think it was. And alongside a recommendation to change the scheme to career average, there were other recommendations there too, around monitoring the cost of the scheme so that it is fair to taxpayers going forward. So the government actually is tasked with carrying an independent review of the costs. And what they do is if their analysis shows that costs have risen, that can then lead to benefits being reduced, effectively changes to the scheme to reduce the cost of benefits. Also works the other way, if it turns out that costs are, have, have reduced, then it might improve benefits for members and the funds. So I, I just wanted to mention that there's a process that's designed to try and take that fairness point into account. And that, that happens every, every four years, actually not just for the LGPS, but the, all the other public sector schemes, police, fire, NHS, et cetera. So just wanted to make that point.
Steve?
Thank you, chairman. From a budget setting point of view, obviously the last thing we want is rates coming down and then in three years' time going back up again. If I'm reading the graph right on page 25 of the pack, am I right in saying that we're still towards the higher end in terms of contribution rates and therefore there's still a degree of prudence in there? Because like I said, the last thing we want is an up and down scenario. Yes, you know, the, the reductions will be welcome and obviously individual rates for individual employers, but what I wouldn't want is them going down and then back up again, because that'd be a disaster from a budgeting point of view.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. There is, the prudence that's in the funding basis is towards the higher end, and that's why the contribution rate is towards the higher end. We think that's a good thing, that there's prudence in there. Like you say, there's a lot of risks, things could go wrong. Having that extra buffer relative to other funds means there's basically more headroom to tap into and, and make sure that things can stay on track if, if things aren't going as well as we'd hope.
Just to add as well, the 20% buffer as well, some other funds have brought that down and are given more back in terms of secondary contribution rates, whereas we're more on the cautious side as well. So it means that hopefully maintaining a kind of stable funding rate. Obviously, we, we don't know what will happen in this world in the next three years, but hopefully our aim is to just maintain stable for employers so they can budget and they can afford their contributions. Thanks.
councillor L.
Just, I agree with councillor Roberts, I don't think it's sustainable long term to carry on as we are, but how you get off the horse is the problem. I mean, as, as well as the career average, I think 10, 2011, they went from RPI to CPI, which actually had a massive beneficial effect. But I don't, how you get off, but I think there were some reforms back then, but I do think more reforms need to happen. And with all due respect, you can't go on saying, well, if we stop contributing, it will make it worse. Long term, we've, we've got to grasp the nettle, but it's not within the grasp of us to do that. But a government of some description sometime has got to move further, I think, because it can't be this situation where those who work in the private sector are far, are outweighed. And the private sector have managed it because most of the private sector has gone from these sort of schemes into different schemes and they managed it. So if they can manage it, I'm sure that councils or local government can manage. At least we have a pension fund, unlike a lot of the public sector where there is no fund and it's just straight, coming straight out of taxation. So the two questions I've got is, one, in your assumptions, you assume the asset classes or the balance is going to stay the same. Is that reasonable in terms of turmoil which is predicted to happen in the financial markets in the next few years? Particularly private sector you mentioned, I think everybody's concerned about, it's a bit of a Wild West situation. And I personally have, you know, I'm worried about local government getting involved with that. But, so I suppose is, is your assumption there correct? And I suppose is it fair to say going from 24% to 17%, that's a massive drop. So in effect, have we been over, as a taxpayer, but it's not anybody else's money, has a taxpayer been overpaying all these years because of undue pessimism, undue pessimistic valuations by previous auditors? This is quite serious because we're talking big money. Millions, millions of pounds every year paid extra by the taxpayer, which meant services, some services couldn't be provided as we would like. So when you talk about a smoother balance going from 24 to 17, welcome as it is, the contrary view is, well, have we been overpaying all these years because somebody was too pessimistic in the future, in the past?
So on the investment point, we, we look at the long term strategy. We haven't made any explicit allowance for changes in investments in the future. So that, that's not in there. However, in terms of whether there's been overpayments in the past, part of the reason the fund's in such a good position is due to things like investment returns. Those have been much higher than expected over the long term in recent years as well. So that's been a key factor in increasing the surplus. And I'd say we're now at a position where we can start to kind of put the brakes on a little bit and give credit back to employers. We think we've done this, I mean, it is a delicate balancing act, we, we think we are doing this in the most in a prudent way that strikes the right balance between affordability, but also ultimately we need to make sure there is enough security there in the fund. We don't want there to be any risk to members' benefits getting paid in the future. And, you know, the future is very uncertain. And I think nowadays as well, we can see global tensions. It could be impact on investment returns. It could be impact on investment returns, climate risk, that sort of thing. So it's, it's trying to achieve a balance and passing on contribution reductions where we can. But we do have a healthy amount of prudence in there, just, just in case with one eye on the future. So I'm not sure if that, that helps, but it's, yeah.
It's one of the reasons we have the three year valuations is to come back here and analyse or look at that to see, have we been paying too much or too little? So I totally, looking at this, yeah, we were paying too much. However, in three years' time, we may find out we're paying too little. So it's, we've got to start somewhere and this is it. No, no, I, I, yeah, I understand it.
So we did the evaluation at 2022, but that's when we took over from the previous actuary. So we, we do have different funding methods and different funding models. So that was a reason as well, moving from, from that funding model to our funding model would have been one of the reasons that it did go up quite significantly last time. But, yeah, I know we, we keep going on about stability. But going forward, we're, we really are hoping for it. And our model does look at stability and it does try and achieve it. So hopefully, going forward, that is what our main aim is. But, yeah, I can appreciate that it is a significant drop.
councillor Key?
Thank you, chair. Yeah, speaking from experience now, because obviously I was on the other side, used to work, you know, cleaning the streets. But this is a defined, you know, benefit pension. And it, it was only like us getting some money back which we weren't paid, you know, in the start. When, when we started working at council and whatnot, you know, it was a low pay rate. A lot of people thought we were paid a lot higher. But when they found out you weren't, you know, it was like, oh, hell, you know. £4.00 an hour, I think it was when I started in 99. The only thing is just recently, because of what's happened over the last few years, with the three years and that again, Covid and something else, money has gone, the pay rises have gone up a bit swift. So I'll use that word. That's compared to what they were going up, you know. When I was working, mine's gone up now with the pension. But it, it was like, all of a sudden, the pay rises were going up to, to, what? Counteract the inflation and, and everything like that. The state of the country. I, I think really, it's, it's been a long time that it's had to like drop back to this now. But if, if that's what you, like you said, the three years is really important. But I noticed, I think I read it in this paper somewhere, some authorities were paying 30% and higher, I think, for some things. So I had concerns, I've had concerns in meetings, as I think Joe will tell you when I say, right, it's the taxpayer that pays towards this. And when you had all the credit, you know, and the thing with the money, people being, you know, really worse off. And so I just think it is probably the right time. And if it's been dropped now, but like you say, it may have to go up in the future. Because unless it is stopped, which was, I think councillor Roberts was saying, when we, you know, when we first started and we were getting low pay, the private sector was getting a lot better pay. So this is just paying people who's paid their money in. Thank you.
We are where we are with the pensions. That will not change unless there is a government that comes in and changes those pensions. So we've got to work with what we've got here. I honestly think final salary or, or career average scheme is absolutely fantastic. I wish I had one now. So I have, and I will follow this and I will make sure it works. But I also think I'm sorry for the people that can't get that and do that. So I do think there needs to be a change. However, this is what we've got, this is what we've got to work with. What we've got here is really good for the next three years for both the employers and in the employees because the pension scheme is still going. And for the employers, their rate of payment going in is likely to come down for everyone, even those that owe a bit more than they need or that primary rate at the moment. So it's still likely to come down. I won't say anything more on that. Are there any more questions? If not, I've got some. Okay. The first one is on the primary rate there. I'd like to have an idea for Lincolnshire, just for Lincolnshire, how much that would save us a year?
So I don't, I don't think the financial implications for individual employers is a, is an issue for the pension fund. I'll just say that first of all. But clearly, the reduction in the primary rate will have impacts on all of the fund employees, employers rather, which I assume will be built into the April 26 budget. So that will come through as part of the budgeting once we get confirmation of what that, what that is.
And I don't know if it's worth adding, for the pension fund as a whole, we are expecting those contributions on a monthly basis to fall in the region of about £3 million. So we're very slightly cash flow positive at the moment. That will take us into that cash flow negative position. But obviously, as Michelle said, that will be spread across all of our employers. And at the moment, that's just a very high level calculation of what we're expecting to see.
Okay. And you already said that this will change to cash flow negative. So we're likely to have to switch some of our earnings on, on shares and things like that to pay off pensions going forward.
Yeah, as it stands at the moment, the majority, well, all of our equities and fixed income investments are made in accumulation units, so we're not getting any income from those at all. Border to coast do offer income units on all of those. So we can move any of those investments into income units. But we would work with the advisor and with border to coast to understand the best places to be doing that from. Yeah.
Thank you. Secondly, I've got the modelling that we've got on page 287. It's showing one year average returns that we're doing the calculations on against the 30 year returns and they're all passive. What? Shouldn't it really be looking at three year average returns as opposed to one year? It's really just a picky point on your modelling, I have to say.
Yeah, so I think by that, by that we mean that the annual average return for any given year over the long term. And that's consistent with the assumptions we make for each broad asset class. The standard deviation is just reflecting that certain asset classes have got higher risks associated with them. So you can see, for example, equities, standard deviation over 5% there. Over the long term, you'd expect higher returns from equities for that higher risk, that there might be more volatility.
Yeah, I can, I can understand that. It was just that really the question is, why did you choose one year and not three years to do the average measurer against? Is that something that is your standard protocol? And if there was, there was some reasoning behind that?
Yeah, I think, I think the labelling could be better in the table there. But I can confirm that the assumed return on those asset classes is what we expect, not just over one year, but on average over the long term. And so typically, we look at around about a 20 year time horizon to reflect the long term nature of benefits. So, yeah, apologies if that's slightly confusing there.
Okay, I'll hold on that one. And then the commutation factor that we've put in for this process there is at 50%. Is that borne out in real life? I, in, in the scheme that I work on outside of this, we're looking at more an 80 to 90% commutation factor. So at 50%, I feel that's a bit low. I know if we put it up to 90%, our, I don't know how much it would change it. And I don't know what data you've got backing that up on 80, on 50%.
Yes, for each of these main demographic assumptions, what we've done is carried out an experience analysis for all the LGPS funds that we advise. And we set our assumptions broadly in line with what that experience is telling us. So the 50%.
My apologies, I can't quite hear you.
Sorry. All of our demographic assumptions are based on an experience analysis of the LGPS funds that we advise. And we set our assumptions to be in line with that experience. So the assumption of 50% for commutation, that is in line with what we've seen for the LGPS.
If you've got data on that, then I'm okay. It's just, like I said, from experience, I don't, and from the own data, my own data that I've got in other pension schemes, I, I think, find that a bit low.
Yes, we, we have carried out an analysis and we've, we've got a separate paper on that that we could share.
Send me some information on that or just?
Yeah, I'm sure we could, we could do that. In terms of the impact to the commutation assumption, the commutation factor in the scheme is, is 12 for one. So for every pound of pension that a member exchanges, they get £12 back in cash. That is quite low relative to how long you might expect a member to live for. So what we see in terms of the funding impact is the more commutation there is, the better that is from the fund's perspective.
From the fund, yes.
Yes. There is an argument that that commutation factor is overdue. I've reviewed there because I think if you compare that with private sector schemes, the commutation factors are a bit more generous. So, but that's what it is in the regulations at the moment and that's what we have to, uh, have to use.
Did you want to say something? Yeah, chair, I, I would just say that either side of 50% is common across the whole of the LGPS. This isn't just necessarily something that barnets are coming with. This is something, a similar level of assumption is what you would see for, for all the four actuarial firms that, that deal with the LGPS. It's, it's a factor that's driven more by the less generous commutation factors that exist in LGPS than do in private sector schemes.
Okay, I've got no additional questions. So... Does anyone else? In that case. Could I have a proposal to take the recommendation that this committee considers, discusses the report and approves the whole fund for 2025 valuation results and the draft S, sorry, FSS, ahead of it going out to consultation with the employers? Councillor Woods and could I have a second, or councillor Key?